All right, I'll call the school committee meeting to order this evening. And we do have a polished agenda. I think that in light of sort of some recent events in the beginning of the school year, we're going to readjust the order of things a little bit so that we have our school bus transportation update first, and that will be followed by the audience sharing portion so that we can hopefully address any questions that those in the audience might have related to that issue and sort of get that taken care of so that those in the audience who are here for that will not have to wait around for the whole meeting unless you want to. So Greg, do you have anything to add?
Sure. The first thing I want to start by saying is the transportation launch to the 2019-2020 was not acceptable for many families. It caused extra stress at a time of year where there are already several changes to family routines. And ultimately, it's my responsibility, and I apologize to those families that were impacted. It was not our intention to have it go the way it did. But I also want to thank the families for partnering with us to try to correct and resolve some of the issues that families experienced. The question I hear most often is, how did this happen? And I want to provide as much information as I can. First, it's important to note that there was a detailed plan, implementation plan developed in the May of 2019 with exact action steps and roles and responsibilities to have a seamless transportation implementation on day one of the new school year. The plan identified each person on the team's specific tasks around the process, which included routing, communicating, et cetera. The plan articulated that the 2019-2020 routes would be built from the routes that we ended the 2018-2019 school year with, as the routes work for the most part. Then we'd adjust for new students or students who moved within our community, but this did not happen. New routes and stops were created as if we were starting from point A. As a result, new routes were designed, and many had significant flaws, errors, and were not logical. And due to the specialization of the transportation software, we had one staff member creating the routes, which created a single point of failure in the process. To correct this, we examined every Southborough route to make sure each route was logical and shortest to safety. This work has been completed and vetted by each of our schools, and many of the new routes will be similar to the routes that were in place in June of 2019. On Monday, September 16th, 2019, new Southborough routes we posted to the district's transportation webpage. Additionally, each student will receive a letter stating his or her bus number and bus stop. The new route will be implemented on the morning of Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. If there still is an issue with a new stop or safety concern, we're asking parents to reach out to the school, and then the school will communicate to the transportation department. Next week, we'll monitor the timing of our routes more closely with North Running Transportation to address any safety concerns and timing concerns. Moving forward, I'm ensuring that multiple staff has expertise in the transportation software and can provide check and balance in terms of route design. Furthermore, there will be increased oversight in the routes created at the district and school level. I'm also forming a transportation advisory committee to support the work moving forward and to make sure that this does not happen again and we have a smooth implementation through transportation in the fall of 2020. And lastly, I'd just like to thank the community for their patience and cooperation as we work to get this right.
Okay, thank you. I think what we'll do first is if there's anybody on the committee that has questions, and we'll sort of go through that, and then we'll open it up to the audience. And I'll just start with one question, which is that, so does this mean that going forward, I think the thing that I've heard the most from the community is, why did the routes completely change? And I think that that wasn't necessarily the goal, and so is the goal going forward to have a set of stable routes that are really just modified for add-drop scenarios as the years we go from year to year?
That is correct. So the design, the goal is to start with what you know and what works.
Yep.
And, you know, we use a piece of software called Transfider, which is GPS and geocoded. So basically, we have those maps we start with, and then we route students who are new to our district or have moved over the summer and have a new address, and we make those corrections. So that is the baseline that we just start with.
Okay. And then just one more question for the transportation advisory committee. Does that, do you anticipate having members of the community, parents, or people on the -- how do you envision that?
So I think having parents from the community beyond that advisory committee. Also, there are some suggestions around having bus parents, which is an excellent suggestion. So the advisory would be members from Southborough and Northborough in the region as well coming together to include and talk about how we can improve transportation service and create a vision for transportation.
I have a few questions. So you'd mentioned that the adjustment didn't happen. Is the reasoning for this that the person who was in charge of doing this was not capable of doing the adjustment? Or was it because there were insufficient people doing it? What was the breakdown in that point? That's my first question.
I mean, I think we had one person who was trained in the transportation software who had the primary responsibility for routing, so there wasn't the cross-training. So that is where it broke down in terms of there wasn't a way for to cross-check and have those checked and balanced in terms of route design.
My other question is around communication, because that was the other issue that I heard a lot from parents, too, is that the way in which these -- and I understand it's a kind of evolving, changing thing over time, but, you know, that at least I heard that there were some complaints brought early on, a couple of the buses even went out, that there were some issues with the routes. And what was happening at that point was the, were they fixing it? What was going on? And then how do we communicate this to parents in a way that I think eases their stress so that this doesn't happen in the future, that there's less confusion?
So the plan had the routes designed by the first week in August with a goal of getting the routes to North Running Transportation. North Running Transportation then providing the routes to the drivers for feedback. That feedback would be given back to us, we'd implement those changes, and then publish the routes based on that feedback. So the routes were created the first week in August, were finished the first week in August, given to North Running Transportation, and then there was, from their feedback, there was no new implementation changes from their feedback. So that's one of the points of failure that we experienced. But, you know, the goal is to have the routes designed early in August to start from a point where we know what works in terms of routing, making sure that the routes are given to the bus drivers so they can examine the routes. Also, the key players in this, key stakeholders are the schools. The routes need to be given to the schools to be vetted and reviewed early in August before they're published to the community and parents and families.
And is there a follow-up to that? Is there someone who can be in charge? Because I know it's hard for, you know, for one, for you or the people trying to fix the issue to get all of these parent complaints is probably not efficient for you to be able to be fixing. So is there some person that can disseminate information around that?
I think there is a, you know, component in this is internal capacity. It's, you know, the transportation position is a stifling position that's on top of someone else's responsibilities. And, you know, we are too large of an organization to have it be just a stifling position. But additionally, we need to build capacity around making sure that there are people who can provide the level of oversight that is required to make sure that this happens correctly. You know, I, as a superintendent, you know, would love to be at that level of detail in every component of our operation, but it's not practical. So we need to make sure that we have the capacity so people can be able to do that and support the work and go and check to make sure it's accurate.
So that was kind of my question, like, what can we, as a school committee, maybe do this year to help support you guys so this doesn't happen again?
So this will be a topic in our combined meeting. We're talking about the organizational growth plan, and part of that planning speaks to growing capacity at the central office to be able to handle our operations in a way that provides great service to the families. So that will be a conversation that we will have at our next combined meeting next Wednesday.
And so can I go back, going back to our, we just had a meeting on bargaining, collective bargaining, and listening well, and taking everything in the right way. So now with that in mind, I want to go back to what you originally said. So you said that the, I think that the routes were supposed to be built from the previous year, and that didn't happen. I don't think I caught why. What happened?
So basically, last year, NRT routed, did all of our routes, and that had its challenges in its own. So we actually took the routes back on in district so we could have more control and more accountability to the routing. The way NRT routes is that they have, they have many customers, so they have many surrounding communities, but they have over 120,000 students that they route. They have one gigantic map. We are one subset in terms of the maps that they have. But basically, they have a map of Massachusetts and all of their communities. They can't extract just their maps or just our maps and give us our maps. So the process was rebuilding those maps, and that's where some capacity and knowledge and execution did not happen.
Good question. So I know we recently did a bus study as part of the school start time.
Yep.
Was that time to be a new year, or if not, will it be more appropriate?
So I think it provides some great data around scenarios and options for starting school later. I don't think that the situation and the experience that we had this past couple of weeks, that addresses those issues in terms of capacity, expertise, and making sure that there's some more specialized training.
I thought they were supposed to be looking at what the buses, what the routes are today for, or last year, I should say.
They did. And that's what they did, yes. But they just, they just took a snapshot. They took a snapshot of time, a two-week window, analyzed the routes during that two-week window for whether it's feasible to start times with different scenarios in terms of school start time.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So now we'll move on to the audience sharing portion. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, we welcome your comments.
Pardon me, my name is Alan Delmeac. I've got two students, one in sixth grade and one in fourth grade, so I appreciate the opportunity. It's my first school committee meeting, so it's nice to see you in our workings. Just a couple of thoughts, I don't want to rehash anything you've already said. Your update was informative. I don't want to go over anything you've already said. But just to share a few things, I don't want to speak for the entire town, but this community wants you to succeed, probably more than you know, because our children's livelihoods and hearts are in your hands. So that begins with the transportation, and of course, within the educators as well. So I think the idea of forming a parental supervisory board is a great idea, and I'd like to volunteer to be on that, so if there's capacity. Officially raising my hands, and we chat about that, so that's great. The one question I have is, we talked about reverting back on the 16th and 17th to looking at some prior routes. I don't want to point this out, but what happens if that doesn't work?
So we, you know, can I, do you mind if I respond to the question?
Not at all. Oh, please, please.
So usually in audience sharing, it's not a given take.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I will.
I think for these purposes.
So I think we have, we have vetted these routes through a number of key people, including building principals, admin assistants. We've looked at where we left off last year, we're using our Transfider software. So we are, you know, I can't give you 100% guarantee, but we are confident that these routes will be much more logical, much more convenient. But that's not to say that they're going to be perfect, and there will be people who still have some concerns, and those concerns should be communicated. But they were built, these new routes we're launching were built on where we left off in the spring of last year as the baseline. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Can I ask an additional question? We're piloting this, right, the GPS. Is there any thought to moving that forward on more buses? Because I know that one of the issues was obviously there was some parents who didn't know where their kids were, they couldn't find them, they were on wrong buses. And so what can we do to prevent that stuff happening in particular?
Yes, so I think two things. I think we do have to, I mean, we're in the 21st century. There's no reason why we can't improve our customer service and provide parents with access to tools and allow them to know where their kids are. Absolutely. I think we are also in the fifth year of a five-year contract with North Running Transportation. And I think when we look for proposals for bus contracts, we need to make sure that we articulate exactly what we want in terms of customer service and tools for parents. I will caution you that there is, I have spoken with various superintendents who have implemented some of these tools, and it does bring another layer of complexity and can bring another layer of confusion if not done thoroughly and thoughtfully. So the idea of piloting it is to make sure that we do it thoroughly and thoughtfully through proof of concept before we roll it out to a large group of parents and further cause more frustration.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Okay, so now we'll sort of resume our original agenda.
Now, would we still be in audience sharing if we?
We are not still in audience sharing.
Can we continue with any more audience share?
Oh, are you sharing something?
I would like to share.
Okay. By all means.
So what I'd like to do is I would like to recognize and thank Paul Desmond for his efforts as the past chairman for several years in the Southborough School Committee. Typically, this acknowledgement or recognition is done at the last meeting of a school committee year where the chairman is stepping down and the chairman is taking the reins. But with our superintendents also having that be the last meeting, I thought that to do something else would be to diminish the recognition we were, that was going on with Christine. Nonetheless, and potentially also it would have diminished the recognition I think Paul deserves. Paul, you know, I think it's been three or four years with maybe one year in between that Jerry Capra, I think, was, and.
Great year.
And then, and then he came back. I think three words come to mind. I think dedication, conscientiousness, and capability comes to mind when I think about the job you did. I guess I'm the only current member of the board that was actually on the board when you started that journey. And I know there were a couple of years where there were, I think I'll call them extraordinary efforts in some things that don't necessarily even normally come before the school committee. I was involved in one, and it was at a number of meetings that you didn't have to attend, but you did. And it was very beneficial. So I think that, you know, as I think about the job you did, always kind of keeping the kids first, you know, I was really kind of amazed at your effort. You know, you've got some big shoes to fill, I just want you to know that. So I'd like to thank you for the job you did and the way you did it. And, you know, I just want to give you that recognition because I know you deserve it.
Thank you. Right, so you have that?
Okay. I would agree with all of that. All right. Anyone else have anything to share? We're all set. Okay. So now we'll move on to sort of the more cheerful and happy side of the beginning of the school year, which is back-to-school opening.
So it's hard to believe that today is the tenth day of the school year. It feels like we've been here much longer. But, you know, we welcomed 1,189 students on August 28th, and, you know, I had a chance to visit all of the Southborough schools, and it was amazing to see the students and the teachers settle into routines. The students seemed thrilled to be back. The classrooms looked like they were definitely ready for students, and I could tell there was a lot of extra effort and dedication to making sure that students' first day was success. On August 26th, two days before the first day of school, we had our Southborough gathering. So we gathered as three districts, 10 schools, one community of learners, and it was a great opportunity to see our learning organization all in one space and celebrate the great work that we do as a school system. Today, we have provided some district-based updates and school-based updates, and I want to begin by introducing some new members of the central office leadership team. We'll hear from each of those members, and then we'll move to principal and chair of the level of each school's launch. So first, I'd like to do introductions. So we have Marie Allen, Director of Student Support Services, who's not a new face. We have Julie Doyle, Director of Instructional Technology and Digital Learning, again, not really new. We have Mary Ellen Dugan, Director of Wellness. So she is not a new face. She is a longstanding Woodward school nurse, but she has taken on a new leadership role, and she has hit the ground running. So she's been outstanding in the past couple of weeks with all of the Triple E and trying to manage, manage that. We have Rebecca Pellegrino, Director of Finance and Operations. Heather Richards, Director of Human Resources, who's new. So she has, she comes from Newton Public Schools where they have 3,500 employees, so she stepped down to a smaller organization where we have 3,000. So this is, this is a much smaller organization for her. We have Rotoette, Interim Assistant Superintendent. And then lastly, we have Jennifer Suger, who's an English Language, Interim English Language Education Director. And Jen is not a new face to our district. She has worked at Albon Regional High School as the ELD teacher for the past couple of years. So each will get a brief update on summer happenings and some of the other departments. We'll start with Rotoette.
So this summer, our teachers and educators engaged in professional learning, and we saw our teachers spend time with math and in social studies to develop curriculum for the new history and social sciences framework. Also in English, exploring for teaching for our literacy classes. At Trotier, as well as educators engaging in world-class instructional design and assessment, which allows our teachers and staff to earn the 15 PDPs in DXL or SCI claim licensure. And also our nurses met to learn health office anywhere and electronic health record.
Good evening. So the summer has died very quickly for us. As you know, we have been undergoing our growth plan, and so we welcomed some new members to our team this summer. Caroline Rollard, who was the Regional Financial Coordinator, moved into the Finance and Operations Administrator role, leaving her position vacant. And last week, we welcomed Michelle, the Miami's in opposition. In addition to staffing changes, we also went through a move, Synopsys is a company who donated furniture to our district, and so our offices underwent a transformation, and we were able to bring all staff into one office, so that we're able to better work together and also collaborate. We have been working closely with the town to close out fiscal year 19 and also to begin the work of fiscal year 20. And believe it or not, fiscal year 2021 is upon us soon as well. We're starting that planning. And last week marked the first full payroll for our staff, so it was a busy time in our office. And you can see that I have a number of warrants for all of the purchases that were made over the summer to get ready for the, for this school year that we are currently in. Employees are now using the web portal to obtain their pay stuff, so that has been a cost savings and also a timing saving for us as well.
Thank you.
Jen.
I'm just waiting. So.
Actually, if you can come up to the mic.
Oh, excuse me.
As Greg had introduced me, my name is Jen Suger, and I'm the Interim Director of English Language Education for the Northborough and Southborough Public Schools. I am pleased to report that we had a vibrant summer program this past summer. It was held at Z School in Northborough and for three weeks in August, the week of August 5th through the 22nd. I want to give a special thank you to Mrs. Soles, the principal at Z School, for housing our program, and also the custodial staff there for working around us. They were very kind. The English learners from Northborough and Southborough in grades one through 12 were, had attended this program at the Z School. There were 51 students in attendance, with 16 of them being from Southborough this summer. In addition to the students, there were teachers, a coordinator, and bilingual student volunteers from Elgonquin and Mellican. The focus of this year's summer program was digital storytelling, which involves combining a form of digital media such as images, voice narration, music, text, or motion to tell a story. To create these digital narrations, our English learners used Scratch, which is a programming language developed by the lifelong kindergarten group at MIT. And this digital storytelling provided the students with a unique opportunity to work simultaneously on both literacy and computational thinking skills because the students had to formulate a premise for their story, employ algorithmic and logical thinking as they wrote code to alter their setting, make their characters interact, and sequence events in their plot. And finally, they had to analyze their code and implement debugging solutions when necessary. While at the summer program, students had many unplugged opportunities as well, as they shared their digital stories with others and even toured the robotics facilities at WPI, where they learned from professors and engineering students. As a true highlight, several of our students even got a chance to drive WPI's competition robot themselves. Overall, this summer's experience developed problem-solving skills in our students that are hopefully transferable to other aspects of their lives. I am truly grateful for the hard work and collaboration of our staff, students, and families for making this year's program a success once again. And I look forward to providing all of you with an update on our Southborough English learners later this year.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Mary Ellen Dugan. I'm the new district wellness coordinator. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I started my nursing career for 20 years at UMass in pediatrics, and then I moved to Woodward for 15 years, and now I'm on to this new adventure. So I'm excited to take it on. It's only been a few months, but I'm learning a lot, most recently about Triple E. But before that, before Triple E, during the summer months, we had nurses working in the ESY program, where students from all the schools were housed at the high school and Finn school. We were able to work together with our electronic health record system provider to allow the nurses to have access to all the students' records, electronic records, and to electronically document, which went for an easy transition from last year through the summer and back to the school. So their electronic records stayed with them the whole time, which was a very smooth transition. The beginning of the school year, as we know, is always busy for the nurses with new students and all the paperwork that all the parents have to fill out for us. Medical forms, physicals, medication orders, care plans, emergency plans, and newly instituted Triple E forms. The paperwork abounds. We have two new nurses in our district at Woodward and at Finn, and they have hit the ground running and are doing an amazing job. We're fortunate to have three per diem nurses in our district to support these bustling health offices. The nurses in the four Southborough schools have been busy since before school started, but in the past 10 days. But in the past 10 days, it's hard to believe it's only been 10 days, they have administered 194 medications, performed 141 medical procedures, evaluated 449 students for illness, injury, or social emotional needs, and managed to oversee the application of insect repellent to hundreds of students, almost a third of our school population, to be exact. I'm looking forward to a year of supporting our awesome nurses and promoting health literacy and wellness in our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, everybody. I'm Julie Doyle. For the upcoming school year, the district technology team will be working hard to manage and support devices and infrastructure so that our students and teachers can seamlessly use technology in the classroom. Over the summer, new student and teacher devices were purchased and prepared for use. Also, our assistant technology manager, want to give him a big shout out, TJ Karen, supervised the installation of security cameras in all of the Southborough schools. Our instructional technology specialists spent a lot of time planning and researching ways to help teachers integrate technology into their lessons. One of our goals this year is for, to provide more opportunities for all students to engage in coding, like what happened at the summer program with the ELL students. Also computational thinking and STEM education experiences. Preparations are already in place, organizing special activities for STEM Week, which is the second annual Massachusetts STEM Week, which will take place in October. And it's a statewide effort to boost the interest, awareness, and ability for all learners to envision themselves in STEM education and employment opportunities. We also spent time over the summer working on a system to help manage, evaluate, and streamline all of our online learning platforms. Last spring, we were chosen to be part of a cohort of schools in Massachusetts that are trying to come up with a trusted and scalable process to identify and procure high-quality instructional products. We're using a tool called Learn Platform to help with this process. Schools pay a lot of money for online platforms, so it's important to measure usage and impact to figure out if it makes sense to continue to fund these digital resources. This platform will also help us manage and inform teachers and parents about student data privacy policies for online programs that are being used in the classroom.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marie Allen, Director of Student Support Services. We began our school year in student support in July, in the beginning of July, with our extended school year program. Our summer was bustling with activity for our Southborough students, who continued their academic and social learning through our extended school year programming. We offered 15 programs and walk-in services, pre-K through grade eight, to 69 students across two schools, and it was mentioned before, at Finn and at Elgonquin. Consolidating services to two schools, four from last year, really helped us with a more effective use of staff and resources. Thank you to our custodial staff and to Principal Ryan and to Principal Walsh at both Finn and Elgonquin for their attention to detail in readying the schools for this summer's programming. We're very thankful for their support and flexibility during the summer months because we realized we're getting schools ready for the beginning of the school year. This summer, we sponsored a new volunteer program involving middle and high school students who earned community service participation as they engaged in social activities with ESY students over five weeks of programming. We had approximately 56 volunteers, and some of those students volunteered for multiple weeks, and they earned certificates for community service. A new activity was led by this volunteer group each week in the following areas: sports, art, music, dance, and games. Thank you to Principal LaBoye and Principal Walsh for partnering with us to offer student leadership opportunities and to provide an inclusive learning environment for all of our participants. It really went over quite well. We had a lot of good feedback. A special thanks goes out to our ESY Coordinator, Helene Desjardins, who did a masterful job in scheduling and coordinating all the programs. At the beginning of the school year, Devlin Mu and Erica Mathew and I traveled the district during the first few days of school and visited with principals and teachers and students and were available to support our building teams. Students and staff were very busily engaged in activities to start this school year. It's been a wonderful start, as was evidenced in all of our visits to all of our schools. And our teams are energized and prepared as they begin their new school year. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. See if I can put that down a little bit. I'm really excited to be here with you this evening and to be a part of these districts. It's wonderful to be here. Getting to know people and the relationships has been, building the relationships has been wonderful. So as you may or may not know, I started July 15th and it hit the ground running right in hiring season. Some people say, "You work in a school district in human resources. Do you have the summers off?" No. Just, just the five days before school started, I met with and onboarded 26 staff members. So my calendar was pretty busy. So we, we have a new team, the new HR staff. We have Nina Wall and Elaine Chisholm, who, the three of us are building our HR team and building capacity to really be able to support employees. And we've been really busy helping new staff members with benefits and lane changes and the required compliance training around ethics. So a lot of these startup things at the beginning of the school year. So I'm just really happy to be here and look forward to new adventures with you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to our opening.
As Marie mentioned, Finn was a very busy place over the summer with our summer program and our garden. I have to give a shout out to our garden and the many families that maintained the garden and harvested the huge bounty of vegetables which were donated to the Southborough Food Pantry. I talked to Pat Draper, one of the managers of the food pantry, before the start of school, and she was amazed at how much families dropped off from our little 10-plot garden. And she said that families were incredibly grateful. I also would like to acknowledge Brian Fantoni, Kali Baba, David Trevino, and all the custodians and students who were part of the summer cleaning crew. They did a tremendous job with our school, making it truly sparkle for our open house in our first day. Our open house, as we, as I've mentioned in previous years, was the Monday before the start of school. And we've done that to help students minimize anxiety and give families an opportunity to come in, see the school, explore the many areas, and have their children show them around the school before the official start. As Heather mentioned, you know, we probably have, what, 11 of the 26 new hires at the Finn School in some capacity? Carolyn Granberg is a Special Education Aid, Krista Curran, Special Education Aid, Tricia Frudman, our new school nurse, taking the place of Dale Burgess, who retired last year, Jessica Noak, Special Education Aid, Hillary Blood, Occupational Therapist, Joan Provincial, who is taking Tracy King's position as Clerical Lead of the Front Office, Wanda Ruiz, Special Education Aid, Catherine Sable, Kindergarten Aid, Emily Silva, our New Behavior Specialist, Holly Stow, Special Education Aid, Erin Whiting, Speech and Language Therapist, and Faith Richards, who is a preschool tutor. Our two days back for staff were incredibly productive. We did a lot of work on our sensory path in our Lego wall. And I have to give a shout out to carpenter Steve Mucci, who actually did the installation of the wall, the frame, with the teachers that put the grant together. Kids are very excited about it. In addition to that, we have sensory paths and we have sensory walls now in the Finn School, which makes the transition to and from classrooms or in and out of the school incredibly engaging for our students. We're working on when to use it because anytime they pass, they're trying to play with Legos and they're doing some of the sensory work. We ended our first week on Friday with our first care program with the famous Johnny the K. He was here and he was also at the Woodward School. I facilitated our first parent coffee, where I gave a general overview of Finn, volunteering opportunities, some parenting advice on having kids getting a good night's sleep to start the school year in adjustment. That will be published on our website. And lastly, I really want to give credit to the incredible staff that we have at the Finn School. Last year, we, I organized a move, including nine teachers from their existing classrooms to new locations, to allow our preschool program to all have bathrooms in their classrooms. It was a huge undertaking. Teachers were packing at the end of the year, over the summer, unpacking, and they all did it with a sense of appreciation and a student-centered focus. So tremendous, tremendous work in rallying for them. So that's it for Finn. We're off to a great start and excited for another year.
So I'll start by saying I assume no responsibility for this Lego wall. I have that in writing. So I just want to make sure that pets out there and on film somewhere. So I want to start by thanking Ed Mercer and Joe Mancini for preparing our building. It was in wonderful shape for arrival of students. Especially like to thank Brian Fantoni for organizing all the many projects that took place at Woodward this summer. Some of those projects included painting a majority of the classrooms. We had our gym floor completely stripped, sanded, and repainted. And it does rival some high school and college courts. If you have a chance, I would love to invite you in to see the brand-new gym floor. We installed a new climbing wall in the gym as well, which, once that gets up and running, it'll be a great resource for our students. We also welcomed Reach One Classroom as part of the Acid Valley Collaborative. That classroom is formerly at Trotteer, so they're finding a new home with us at Woodward. I'm going to let Brian Fantoni speak to the driveway project. It was quite an undertaking and he would have all the details on that. This year, we welcomed new staff, Kelly Kylie as our new school nurse, Jocelyn Kelly is a new second-grade teacher, Megan Duchaine changed roles from special ed to a third-grade teaching position, as well as Lisa Goulet, who changed roles from a classroom teacher to a special ed position. We welcomed Laura Kirk, Kristen Delaney, Lauren Lightbody, Nancy Villas as educational support professionals. So we're very lucky to have all of those new staff onboard. We began our year Tuesday, August 27th. We held our annual open house. As Principal Ryan mentioned, we had a great turnout. It's a wonderful opportunity for kids to come in and see the building, get those first-day jitters out of the way, share the learning space with their parents and classmates. We had about 90% of students attend, which we're extremely happy with. I hosted my first principal coffee around the topics of volunteering and how to become involved as parents in our school community. We also had our first care assembly where we had Johnny the K come share his positive message around character traits, linking back to all of our care themes for the year. So that was a great way to kick off the school year. A big thanks to our SOS who sponsored that. Today, we had our first walking school bus of the year with about 25 walkers. We're really proud of that. We had parents, staff, and kids, you know, walk to school today on a kind of a humid morning, but it was still a really nice way to kick off the year. Finally, I'd like to recognize the entire Woodward staff for a great opening. When posed with specific challenges around transportation and significant warning levels around Triple E, all staff have stepped up to do what's best for kids, and I want to recognize that, putting in long hours and late nights and showing great flexibility around scheduling. I'm extremely proud of the entire staff. I really can't say enough about their efforts. And aside from those relatively small issues already discussed, we've had a great opening for students.
On to Mary. So just as Principal Ryan and Principal Mucci said, we can't thank our custodians enough and to Brian Fantoni for leading the way. Mike Daigle, our head custodian, Claudio De Silva, our second shift custodian, really were tired this year to prepare Mary, and it looked fantastic on opening day. As a staff, we kicked the year off thinking about what is our why and reading the book, The Coffee Bean. If you haven't read it, please read it. It's a great message. We have new teachers, a new teacher that joined our team, Catherine Ledger, who was an educational support professional, now she's a fourth-grade teacher. We brought onboard Carolyn Hool, Vangeline Astadi, and Francesca Cavalo as new ESPs. So we're thrilled to have them onboard. Kudos to our teaching staff for incredible preparedness, working collaboratively to get classrooms ready, distributing supplies, and welcoming students on our first day. And a big thank you to our SOS for distributing the first-day supply kits on the hottest day of the summer. They brought their student, their children in, and it was really quite a collaborative effort. And it was nice to have some whiteness in the school while it's quiet. So thank you to all of them. Our first annual open house worked really well, and we were able to welcome families in. We had 222 families join us. So that was very exciting. And we had our ice cream social. We moved it inside because of the Triple E threat, but it was well-attended and a little bit of melting ice cream. But that's okay. It was great, and we look forward to continuing that practice. We have two new spaces at Mary. We have a Zen Don, which we're going to be adding a sensory space to as well, with our new poster maker that we're able to make sensory stickers on. So we're excited about that. And we added some flexible hallway seating as well to encourage collaborative work amongst our students. 10 of our 14 rooms now have the Red Cat Lightspeed System. Last year, David Finner and Kristen Tav came and shared. Well, now we have 10 of our 14 rooms, but our goal is to fulfill all of the rooms by the end of the school year, hopefully. And so we're excited about that. We're continuing to encourage students and staff to choose kind. Our common language is tied to our care themes and cauterizing high-five stickers continue to be a focus for us, using five new phrases, be ready, be responsible, be respectful, be kind, and be safe. And we're celebrating student and staff successes as, as we work towards being positive role models. At our first Friday farewell, which technically became a terrific Tuesday, so it's a bit, we unveiled our six-foot sign that says, "Be the Eye in Kind." And the eye is, there is an eye, so students stand in the place of the eye. So we're connecting that to our cauterizing. When students get cauterizing, they'll be standing at our, at our big sign. So please come and take a look and stand in the eye. We completed our whole-school recess survey, which is exciting. We used that to identify how students are viewing the recess sign, making, making sure students have connections, planning recess groups. And there's a section on the survey that, is there anything you'd like to tell Mrs. Whiting? I love reading. It's good. I hear a lot. I learn a lot, and I, I value that teachers took the time to have the students take the survey because it really helps to guide a lot of our work. And again, making sure students have connections to adults and in their peers. SOS brought in an amazing show last week called The Amazing Hero, Amazing Hero Art with Rob Serret, which focused on kindness and heroes, which connects directly to our care and kindness themes. And if you haven't seen him, please Google it. There was not a dry eye in our, in our, in our event because he was so moving. And he creates portraits while talking about kindness and sharing about heroes. And at the end, thanks to the kindness of the SOS, they purchased us, purchased two portraits, one of Abraham Lincoln and one of Martin Luther King Jr. And they're six foot by four foot. They're massive, and those will hang in our dining room. So we're super excited about that, and thank you to the SOS for doing that. Our volunteer, our principal's coffee was well-attended this morning. It was great to connect with former parents, as current parents that we've had for fifth grade, now, fourth grade now fifth grade, and new fourth-grade parents. So it was really, really nice to be able to meet with them. Our Dare Officer, Aaron Richardson, has already been in. He's setting up his Dare Training with our fifth-grade teachers, and he's making time to get into lunches and get on the playground with our friends. We continue to communicate as much as we can about the wonderful things that are, that's happening at Mary through our virtual backpack, our website, some more, and our social media. And our first school council meeting is October 10th. So we're so excited and looking forward to a terrific year.
Well, I brought up the schools and talk about Trotteer. We also had a good start. Brian is going to be speaking shortly, but a thank you to him and the crew, like everyone said. It is no, it's not a small task to get the building It is no, it's not a small task to get the buildings ready, but he and the team do an amazing job. And for our students, the start of the year really started with a mindfulness moment that extended itself. So we brought in Nina Bryce from IBME, which is Inward Bound Mindfulness Education at Concord, and she really did an amazing job inspiring our teachers and then our students to really think about the small things that make mindfulness very effective for them as an individual, which ultimately land to more effective ways for them to interact with each other. So we got a lot of awesome feedback about that, which is going to lead to future opportunities. And Gary and the team and I are kind of talking about that, surveying, and get a sense of what we're going to do next. So it's really been a nice springboard and a great way to start the year. I do have some sad news to share. Some of you may have heard this already, but the Stone Environmental Center in Madison, New Hampshire, has closed its doors. Unfortunately, the operator of that and owner of that program passed away unexpectedly last June, and we just became aware of it in mid-August. So we were able to, Gary has especially been in contact with his wife, and his name is Dave Fries, and we've known Dave for 30 years now. And it was very sad to get that news, but we are going to have to move forward and think of new alternative opportunities, which Gary actually was on the phone with someone today about. So it's an active process that we're getting involved in. So since 1981, Stone has been an establishment that we've engaged with. So we are very sad about that. We had a lot of upset teachers that have phenomenal memories, and thousands of students have walked through our doors because of it. So we will be reviewing that as the year unfolds and certainly not rushing into any decisions about what to do next. So that's on the horizon on a negative note. I also have some new staff to introduce on a very happy note. We're very excited about them. We have two new ESPs in our neck partnership program, Lauren Casidio and Carly Soder, who have done an amazing job getting to know our students and really diving in. We also have a new inclusion program ESP, Katie Dounell, who came back to us. She was with us in our Castle program for a couple of years and couldn't stay away. So she came back and filled a very tough vacancy of one of our longtime ESPs, so I'm very excited to have her onboard. As far as an announcements concerned, tomorrow night is Curriculum at Trotter. The other buildings started their open houses. Ours is tomorrow, and we're going to have dozens of our eighth graders volunteering, helping parents, especially our new sixth-grade parents, navigate the building and follow a Tuesday schedule. So they will follow a mini Tuesday schedule and really get the feel of what their day is like for their students. So we're really excited about that. And certainly, you know, as has been mentioned, a huge credit to our teachers for getting prepared for the school year. They have done a lot of good work over the summer. Roder mentioned some of it. I supervise some of it as well, and this place was hopping in mid-August with people preparing their classrooms and getting ready. So a huge appreciation for their work in getting this started. So thank you for this opportunity. I know the principals really like sharing the news of the start of the school year, but I will be out with a, if we can bring up Mr. Fantoni and let you know about some of the projects that are going on, if that makes sense.
So if we actually had Brian speak when we have the...
Oh, you didn't do that? Okay. Great. I didn't want to steal his stuff. He's got a lot to share.
He's got a great show, ready to go.
But I just want to also commend the principals and the leadership team for all their hard work. I think we're one of the only businesses that actually has a stop date in June, takes a break over the summer and starts up again in August. And the amount of energy it takes to launch a new school year and preparation and attention to detail is very impressive, and I get to see every day these folks working collaboratively as a team, and they actually have fun working together. So I get to observe them every day. I just wanted to personally thank you for a great start and being great colleagues and forward to a great year.
And I'll just say, having been in a couple of the buildings, the energy is palpable. You can just tell everyone's excited to be back, so it's really wonderful. Thank you for all that. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item, which is legislative update.
So in your packet, there were two documents. One was a resolve creating a special commission to study school starting times and schedules. So I know that's been work that the district is endeavoring to make a decision on, and I just thought it was important to share that at the state level, there's some momentum building as well. And also in your packet is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and just some updates on their position on Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations. Basically, the PROMISE Act, there's some discrepancy about how long it will take to implement the commission's recommendations. The governor's proposal is over a seven-year period, and the PROMISE Act is over a five-year period, which something we'll want to keep an eye on in terms of our advocacy for implementing any of the commission recommendations.
Thank you. Next is the FINN School Boiler feasibility study.
So in January of last year, we submitted three statements of interest to MSBA. One was for the FINN school roof, as well as the Trotter, and as well as the FINN boiler. And as you know, we were accepted to enter into MSBA's accelerated repair project through the FINN boiler. So part of that process is to allocate funding for schematic design. So this evening, we need a motion and a vote certifying funding for this FINN elementary boiler schematic design. So I provided a motion.
You have the language, so it has to be specific.
I volunteered to put this motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Because it, these motions for certification funding require nothing to be left out, they need to be precise. I'm going to read this. It's only two sentences long, but I also want to disavow any responsibility for the length of the first sentence. So I would like to move to see if the school committee will vote to transfer $70,000 from the Southborough Public Schools' facilities rental revolving accounts to be extended under the direction of the school department for the purposes of the schematic design phase of the accelerated repair program project for the replacement of the boiler installation at the Mary E. FINN Elementary School located at 60 Richards Road in Southborough, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the town of Southborough may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA. The second sentence is, "The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any cost the town incurs in connection with the schematic design phase in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town."
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
And I will say, for my honor, that this language came from MSBA's legal counsel.
I believe it. Having read legal presentations before, I absolutely would... I'm actually surprised it wasn't just one sentence, but they got a period.
Semi-colon.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on that, or is that...
That is. So we'll move into the schematic design. Once we have the schematic design, that will be reviewed by MSBA, and then they'll make a final decision whether to continue forward with the project.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Okay, so now we'll do old business, public safety building update.
So this is just a general update and thank you to the town administrator, Mark Purple. He's been amazing in terms of a partner, in terms of considering Woodward School and making sure we have proper fences and addressing any of our concerns. I'd also like to thank Steve Lucci and Brian Fantoni for taking the initiative and taking the lead on this project and making sure that it went well for Woodward. And we also made some accommodations for the town. Town administrator, Mark Purple, has been outstanding as an excellent partner for us to process.
That's wonderful. Okay, school safety update.
So school safety continues to be a top priority. Throughout each school year, we conduct safety drills into Dallas and evacuation drills, and we continue to partner with our town safety officials. And this year, one thing we're doing that's new is partnering with Sandy Hook Promise Organization, and we're launching the Say Something program. Basically, the Say Something program provides education to middle-school and high-school students to recognize signs of mental distress and gives them different ways to communicate that to adults. There's also an O's app that concerns to be surveyed on the initial process, in which those are then vetted and then brought to the school's attention for action. So we'll be rolling that out in the next couple of months, but it's a nice partnership and another tool that we're adding to our school safety efforts.
Great. Okay, next is 2019 to 2020 subcommittee on new assignments.
So in your packet is a draft of assignments. If you have not yet provided, if you're interested in joining, please do so. I think this is information that we have as far...
Okay. Very good.
Should we lump that on that?
What's that?
You be the liaison to the select.
Oh. Are you still listed? Yes, so I should be a liaison to the select. Okay. Anything else on that? Do we need to fill any of these?
So I would add that one thing that is not one subcommittee is we are starting up a pre-K through both music study group to evaluate, assess our pre-K through both musicals across our three districts. So that is one subcommittee that is not listed, that we are looking for a school committee member to be part of that work.
Okay. And all these ones with blanks still need somebody right now, or do we need to fill? We've historically had some blanks.
Yeah.
When things aren't active.
I think we did go through that if there's a blank, it's not inactive, not a subcommittee at this point.
Anything else on this?
Excuse me.
Yes.
So where is the, so the music study is not, why isn't it on this right now?
Not yet. It's not yet. Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to superintendent's report to the committee. First is update on summer projects.
So now I get to introduce Brian Fantoni. Before he speaks and shares all the great work that happened, I just think, thanks, Brian, for his hard work and dedication. There were a lot of moving parts this summer, a lot of large projects, and Brian handled all projects seamlessly. I don't think I saw him sweat once, well, maybe once, maybe once, but he was, you know, he was on top of each project and communicated to us what the need was. And in addition to managing those large projects, he also managed to have his team thoroughly clean and prepare our buildings for the launch of the school year, which is no small feat on a normal year. So Brian, thank you, and I'd love to have you share the summer projects and the work that was accomplished.
All right, so I'll just give a quick update. Glycol, I know that was a hot topic last year. We were finally able to accomplish that in the buildings, get the heating and cooling systems flushed out, back to where they need to be. So we're all ready and set to go for the heating season. We're probably in the best shape that we've been as far as that's concerned in years. I'm also looking into implementing a preventive maintenance plan to extend the life of the heating systems, so hopefully we're not going through this again. Woodward parking lot, Steve mentioned that briefly. We were able to improve the safety for staff and students. We added crosswalks, the flow of traffic for the buses. I believe we added an extra handicap spot. That's been going well with the buses. I'd like to recognize and thank Karen Gallagher for her work with that project. She really took the lead with a lot of it, and it kind of came down to the wire, but we snuck it in. I may have been sweating a little bit at that point to get that in, but that's all been going well. Steve mentioned the Woodward Gym. If you go over there, he's probably going to have to take your shoes off. He doesn't want anybody in here. We were also, by having these projects at Woodward, we basically closed the building to staff and programs for the summer, so we were able to get a majority of the inside of the building painted over the summer, so that was another added benefit to that. Let's see, we also threw, at the request of police and fire, we've numbered all our exterior doors in all our buildings to more of a national standard, so that any emergency responders won't be guessing, you know, what door A1 means or that. And they kind of used us as a pilot program, and they want to roll this out with the rest of the town, so all the town buildings will follow the same format. I'd also like to thank the custodial staff and recognize them. As Greg mentioned, there was a few extra bumps in the road this year that we're not used to, and the crew really rallied together, and a lot of people worked outside the box and did some things they weren't used to doing, but everybody did it, and they did a great job to get the buildings open and looking good and ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That looks great, the outside of Woodward.
So next in your packet is the capital plan update. So as we begin our FY21 budget season, the budget subcommittee will be reviewing capital plans to make sure that it's updated. Brian has also reached out to Karen Gallagher to look at all of our parking lots and to do a master plan in terms of paving and what that would look like. We're also looking at continuing to look at the roofs at FINN and Trotter and submitting SOLs again through MSBA's Accelerated Repair Project, but this document will be updated in the next few weeks, and we need as a subcommittee. Also in your packet is September 2019 enrollments. Our projected enrollments for FY20 was 1,185, and on August 28th, we welcomed 1,189, so we were four students off. I'd like to commend Mr. Ryan for his almost exact, I think those four students came from kindergarten, so I think that we welcomed 138 K students to share an objection of 134. So we were very close with little bearings, and we are within our class size policies across all of our classrooms, pre-K. Also in your packet is the final FY19 end-of-year general fund expenditure report. I'm pleased to share that if you look on the last page, the balance is zero. So I would like to commend and keep up with our own hard team for all the hard work that goes into actually closing out a fiscal year. It takes a tremendous amount of effort and attention to detail, and the team did a great job. We will need to have a vote.
Go through until audited?
Through until...
I'll move to approve the final fiscal year FY19 end-of-year general fund expenditure report since June 30, 2019, until...
Also in your packet...
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, all right, discussion? All in favor?
So also in your packet is the FY20 budget. So we were concluding one fiscal year, we were launching another. So again, that's a tremendous amount of work, and the financial department did an outstanding job. There are just significant variances at this time, and our bottom line at this point is 7.5%, 7.5, 7.54%. And last year, at this time, we were at 6.87%, so we're tracking very small number over at this time this year.
Do you need a vote to approve until audited?
I'll move for the 2020 budget, and we approve our monthly general fund expenditure report as of August 31, 2019, until...
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
So in your packet is also the FY2021 school committee budget priorities. So these were our budget priorities. So, these were our budget priorities for FY '20. So, at our, my recommendation at our October meeting, we have a discussion around what our priorities should be. But this is kinda starting for us to consider what those might be.
Will you be able to take out the kindergarten?
Yes.
Line item?
And then next is the proposed FY '20 '21 budget calendar. And we have included the dates that we know about. And as we know, this is a fluid document as the budget process moves forward. To an initial start.
Can I ask a question about that, which I'm not sure any of us know the answer to? So, there is no even weak determinant yet pretending that it's true.
So, I attempted the date, it was March 28th.
So, that is a tentative, so that's a tentative date?
Yep.
That's been made tentative by the, what is selecting as far as we know?
So, I received a communication today. I bet that, that is the date that has been discussed as potentially the time we need to solve the problem.
Well, I had mentioned the importance of knowing what that date was, because it does certainly make a big difference, you know, to some of the school principals, you know, as far as activities, et cetera. So, that would be great if they would, they would hold to that date. But that's still only tentative.
It is, and we are starting the budget process in the next week or two to make sure we have enough time to defer a job and accommodate any, whatever data is inside of it.
Thank you.
This is a similar schedule to last year.
It is.
When the early town meetings.
Right. And I'm not only thinking of the, of the accelerated budget process that we have, but also, you know, dealing with a specific date, you know, which affects people.
Yeah, absolutely.
Excludes the superintendent's report.
All right, so next is educational policy. None at this time, policy development distribution, none at this time, personnel agents, distribution and personnel report and new staff appointments.
So, in your packet, there's a list of weaves and pacts, selections and transfers. So, as Heather Richards mentioned, it was a very busy month of August, though.
She has a nose.
Beginning of September.
Very good. All right, next is communications, back to school newsletter.
See, a back to school newsletter that will have to the community of August 15th. Next, we have the North Anisboro District Read. So, we have our three district, ten schools, one community of readers. And this year, the book is "To Gift a Failure" by Jessica Lakey. So, you have a copy of the book. We also will be having Jessica come and speak on March 25th as part of the book series. So, we'll be communicating more, maybe about this opportunity.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Makes you think.
Yes.
What was that date?
March 25th. Next is a letter of thank you for donations from Synopsys. As Becky mentioned, we received a phone call this summer from Synopsys stating that they were moving and were donating furniture. So, we jumped on the opportunity. And as a result, we were able to do some remodeling of some of our office spaces and upgrading of office spaces due to their donation formation. We have a new, new to us conference table, new conference chairs. And it makes the space look much more professional and much more comfortable. So, the donation was greatly appreciated. We have a acknowledgement letter, Lindsey Sherman. So, her participation in the UMS Royal Sinfonic Band Camp. So, they've sent us a letter thanking us and acknowledging our participation in that camp. So, it was nice to hear that our educators have done great things for the community. We have the 2019, 2020 NSPAC calendar of events listed. And I think the first NSPAC general meeting is scheduled for October 11th. And that will be held in the Southborough Library at 10.
Just to, if I may, just to backtrack. So, is there any requirement, I'm guessing there's not, to have a vote to accept non-monetary donations?
I know we've voted the monetary ones.
Absolutely.
That's a good question.
I'll just, I'll just check.
Legal counsel.
Okay, yeah. Because, I mean, we'd be sort of huffking to do some meetings. I don't know myself, and I probably shouldn't.
I can check with legal counsel actually if there are parts of vote in mind.
Perfect.
School committee meeting dates, 2019, 2020. And just, we'll note that the next October, our next meeting is on a Monday due to holidays. And in your packet is the information about an MASC joint conference with MESS and states. And again, they encourage spokes to attend if they can. They can work, it's a great opportunity to network with other school committees, to network with each other, and also engage in professional cooperation. Lastly, distribution of the NGL 2019 selected pass general law. And I will not tell you how it ends this year. But I will say that if you do not want your hard-bout pocket, we will collect them back and give those to the residents.
All right, thank you. Okay, next is action on minutes. Meeting of June 12th, 2019.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of Southborough's co-committee meeting of June 12th, 2019. Second.
Any comments in discussion? All in favor?
Very thorough.
Yeah, they're very thorough. Okay, approval of bills and protocols. Okay, agenda items for next month. So, we have school improvement plan presentation schedule listed.
We did have the CIO by literacy as...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, great. Nice thinking, role language update.
Maybe worth a placeholder for an update, I guess, of master planning community, you know, of the schools that are involved in that.
Yeah, that's great.
Same placeholder, but we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, so now we have on the agenda that we're going to enter into executive session. And we need a motion that we will do that and not return to open meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, audience sharing first. Anybody have anything to share?
Actually, I have one thing to share.
Oh, great.
So, just a reminder that we will be having our facility tours on Monday, September 23rd. And that those tours begin at Woodward at 6:00 PM. So, you actually can see the floor and the walls.
These were clean socks.
Pretty slide.
So, and I will send out a reminder as well. And we'll be joined by members of advisor, potentially, of the board.
Thank you. All right, so now, a motion to enter into executive session. Who's the lead to make one?
I'll move that we move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to chair determination that the discussion regarding this matter and the whole of the, may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intention of returning to open meeting. Second.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call.
Line. Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.